Ms. Varamis for 3.2, and then I'm going to, and then we're going to have discussion and/or vote, and then I'm going to ask for a motion for Mr. Cahill, 3.2. We'll have a discussion and a vote. And then I will individually come up and swear them in. So I'm not going to ask for a vote, then swear, and then come back and ask for another vote. I hope that makes sense. So, that having been said, I will now entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer Varamis to Alderman of the First Ward. Where's First Ward? Where's First Ward? Alderman Doiter, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I have my hand up, Mayor. I'd be happy to.
Okay, so we have Alderman Doiter, First Ward Alderman Doiter, who's made a motion. Do I have a second? Alderman Mulliner, second. Discussion. Seeing none, I will ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Talludo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. We have it to Alderman. Let's hold our applause till the end. Now on to Agenda item 3.2. I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Cahill to Fourth Ward Alderman. Motion by Alderman Talludo, second by Alderman Bram. Clerk, uh, I'm sorry. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, I would ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Talludo. Park.
Aye.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner. Doiter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Mr. Cahill has been appointed. So I'm going to ask, well, I'm going to turn on this mic. Staff tells me that the mic will be live and it will be recorded, so I'm going to mute my computer. Testing one, two. Yeah? Okay. So normally, I invite the, um, the person I'm swearing in up, and I invite every single person here who is supporting that person to come up and join us. But because of the current situation, I'm only going to ask immediate family. So Jennifer and Joe, and Hugo's not here. Come on up here, guys. You're going to stand, you're going to stand right here. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. You, whatever you're comfortable doing. Mike, am I okay? I mean, as okay as that can be? Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jennifer Varamis. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of First Ward Alderman, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Round of applause. Stand right there. No, no. Hold on. Chief, one more. Okay, now I'm going to ask Joe to take his seat back there, but you are going to sit right there. Okay? Brian, you want to come on? Come on up, and immediate family, for sure. Jennifer, did you tell everyone who Joe was, or did they already know? Okay, all right. Okay, so Brian, congratulations. Please tell me who we have here. Let everyone know who we have. Fantastic. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Cahill. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman, of the Fourth Ward, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Okay, fantastic. Are you ready? You can have a seat right here. Got to get your stuff. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting, thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting them. Normally, we would have you all up for kind of a group picture, but we'll take a rain check on that. And you're more than welcome to stay, but, and these guys are required not to stay, but you're not required. So, thank you very much. Another round of applause. Just pause here. Unmute. Alderman Varamis, can you hear me? I need you to unmute and say that you can. Yes? What?
The microphone in front of your face. Move it down.
Oh. Down, or down. Jennifer, can you, can you unmute? See if I can hear your audio.
Yes, can you hear me?
No, you have unmute your microphone. Really? Not according to me, but that's okay.
She's logged in twice, for some reason.
She's doing twice the duty already. Alderman Cahill, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, there we go. All right. So Alderman Varamis can hear me, and so can Alderman Cahill. So fantastic. We're back to full strength. Um, we will now go on to Agenda item four, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communications they wish to submit for distribution at a later time? Anybody in, uh, in council chambers, please raise your hand if you have anything to submit. Seeing none, um, either Mike Capp or Tom Trazin, I can't tell who's over there. Is there anybody there who has written comments they wish to submit?
No, there is not.
Okay. Uh, then we'll go on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any items they so choose. We ask that you direct your comments to the chair. Out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening, and respect for others who may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. I like to go with whoever is on the line first, so that we grab them while we can, in case we have a malfunction later on. Mr. Capp, I know that, um, we had at least one person who had indicated they were going to call in for a public comment. Is that person on the phone?
Yes, she is.
Okay, um, I believe it's Ms. Sullivan. Please state your name, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathleen Sullivan. Um, this Friday, July 24th, will actually be the 10th anniversary of the major flooding event, um, in 2010 that sort of put us to, to, um, it, uh, it's the second flooding event in a month. Um, it was the one that spurred the creation of the task force and the hiring of the engine, the Burke Engineering and RJN Engineering firms to do the study of Elmhurst, the 10 study areas. Um, I'm pleased with the progress that's been made over the decade, with over a dozen projects already implemented, um, the national recognition that you get not only from engineering groups with the awards that have been received by your Public Works Department and, uh, city engineer team, but additionally, the public advocacy recognition that Elmhurst attracts is really great. And so you can be pleased with what's been done over the decade, and I hope to see the work continue. I look forward to touring the Salyers, uh, Swain Ballet area this week. It's under construction, and I look forward to continued good work in this area. Thank you.
You're muted.
Oh, here we go. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mike, is there anybody else who is, uh, on electronically?
No.
Okay, um, I don't see anybody here for public comment. Clerk Spencer, uh, Clerk Spencer. Oh, it's been so long. Clerk Tamer, uh, is there anybody who's signed up?
No, Mayor, nobody's signed up.
Okay, so nobody signed up here but Mr. Capp. I think you have one or two people there who want to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, first person, floor is yours. This guy looks familiar.
Hello, well, Troy Van Aken from Elmhurst University, and, um, I'm really here because of the, um,
Say it again. Where are you from?
Elmhurst University.
I love it. Okay, go ahead.
But I'm really here to be, uh, supporting a project that we've got going on with, uh, the Walter Street and the parking lot, and, um, appreciate the city staff helping us step through some of those things. I wish that was an urgent project for us, but as you know, COVID has changed a lot of educational institutions' plan, and I just wanted to let the city know that we're going to be communicating with the council members, also with the city, now University Commission members, and some other key constituents. Our plans to continue to try to reopen, uh, but it's not a reopen no matter what. We're trying to be very thoughtful about the impact that it will have on the community, on our students, on our faculty. And so I just got a report. We've given our faculty members some options in terms of how they feel that they might be able to teach their courses, given certain realities we're dealing with in a region and in the nation. And, uh, right now, if I was to put an estimate on it, um, we're going to have only about half of our courses are going to actually, uh, be in person, or half of the course meeting times are going to be in person. So it's going to significantly reduce the college population. Um, we're still trying to play through a number of things. For example, nationally, a big debate is, are we even going to be able to have fall sports or certain other types of activities? And we each have some opinions about that. But I think within the next week, that'll get cleared up. Um, I think what I want to reassure, though, the city and the constituents of the city is, is that, um, we're trying to be very thoughtful, and we're very mindful of our neighbors when we're doing this. And so, you know, for example, if you're on campus, I mean, it's a requirement that you wear a mask unless you're socially distanced from individuals. We also have certain other protocols. We've secured testing, uh, for COVID testing, um, allocations with different companies. So we're, really feel like we're trying to be as prepared as one can be in, in that regard. So, thanks again. The primary reason is for the, the permitting process, but, um, I thought while I was here, I'd say something about this.
Thank you, Mr. Van Aken. Mr. Tru, uh, Mr. Capp, is there anybody else in that room who, uh, wants to participate in public comment?
No, there is not.
Okay. I don't see anybody here. Um, that's going to wrap up public comment. Um, on to announcements. Any announcements from the dais, or the virtual dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. At this time, um, is there any item on the consent agenda any Alderman wishes to remove, have removed, to provide additional comment or vote? No. Alderman Bram.
Seven dot eighteen.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Palomsky. Alderman?
I'm trying.
There you go.
Green.
You're good.
You're good, okay. Seven point five, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus items seven point five and seven point one eight. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Dunn. Clerk Tamer, the vote, please.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Talludo. Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner. Doiter. Varamis.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, two, uh, zero, um, fourteen ayes, zero nays. No, no one's absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda, minus item seven point five and seven point one eight is approved. On to Agenda item seven point five. This is a report out of DP and Z. I would ask for the clerk to read the recommendation.
Case number 20P dash 10 backward slash McMaster dash Carr Supply Company, conditional use permit for a planned unit development and conditional use permit for building height, out of DP and Z.
That was the title. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommend that the city council approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit for preliminary planned unit development pursuant to sections 22.26 and 22.31 of the Elmhurst zoning ordinance and a conditional use permit for building height. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Sign Michael Hanquist, Chair, Mark Mulliner, Vice Chair, and Bob Dunn, Alderman Second Ward.
Okay, to prepare for the council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to, uh, Alderman Palomsky pull the report.
Alderman Palomsky, you have this report pulled. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank staff, zoning planning commission, DP and Z committee, and McMaster Carr. Um, this building, this facility, this business, is located in the Third Ward, and I want to address several, several of the points that have been raised to help describe the process and the way this project will, um, uh, shape up. So, some may remember, there's a, well, there've been other issues that have come before council, and when there's a conditional use about their expansion, often the situation has been, well, maybe that facility doesn't necessarily fit in that zone. Um, but this business is in industrial, it's an industrial one zone, and, um, that's the entire zone around it. It's not that it's a, a business that happens to be in a different one, that, that's been there a long time. It's bordered to the north by an unincorporated area, to the east by County Line Road, uh, to the south by Cemetery, and to the west by a narrow strip of that, um, cemetery property. The height request is a conditional use, and because of the size of the parcel, it's also a, um, planned unit development. So there are severance, seven standards for that height vari, or conditional use, and then 10 for that planned unit development, and a number of questions were addressed, and, you know, the standards had to be, um, the applicant had to demonstrate that those standards were met. So I do believe that McMaster Carr has met the standards, including those related to traffic, appearance, and, uh, noise and pollution. So the truck traffic on the site is not expected to increase with the expansion of the warehouse. The truck docks will not be relocated, and the trailers will be moved away further from the view of the neighbors on Adele who can see it. McMaster Carr is planning to add a new berm and screening consisting of evergreen foliage around the west side, and additionally, expanding the berm to the north. The berm and retaining wall will vary in height between seven and, um, 16 feet. The building setbacks will exceed the 20-foot setback requirement. So to the north side, there's a setback of 120 feet. On the south side, there will be a setback of 55 feet, and the west will have 20 feet. That western boundary line runs along the cemetery property. All lighting will be downlighting. Um, and to provide some perspective on what this will look like to the neighbors who can see it, um, that 23 feet of additional height is at a distance of 450 feet. So it's a very small proportion of the viewing angle for those neighbors. So, um, it's, it will not make a significant impact. Um, and because in 2019, McMaster Carr was very responsive to some concerns and some issues around the construction of a parking deck, I think that they've shown that they will be a good neighbor. And so overall, I think that without an expansion, McMaster Carr will, you know, relocate. So I think that this plan, um, demonstrates a commitment by McMaster Carr to fit within the neighborhood, um, while also, um, the, hopefully, the city's, and the city's commitment to retain them. So I think it's a good project, and I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Uh, my comments will be brief. I echo Alderman Palomsky's comments in regards to, uh, this development, as well as McMaster Carr overall being willing and going above and beyond to be a good neighbor, um, to the neighborhood, to the west exclusively. Um, I have received only one call in regards to this development, and it was a concern in regards to the height. Um, but as Alderman Palomsky already stated, I think even though that the height is, in my estimation, excessive from what a requirement states, adding the additional berm and the height that they are proposing, and the distance from the property line that they are proposing it at, um, will pretty much negate any concerns that any nearby residents would have from the visual of the taller building. So I, as well, support this development.
Okay, any additional comments? Seeing and hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Aye.
Talludo.
Park. Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Varamis.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item seven point five is approved. On to Agenda item seven point one eight. This is an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5 backward slash 11 dash 1 dash 6.
As I've stated in previous council meetings, um, I do not feel that extending the, or extending the granting of the executive power is needed at this time. I think it was needed in the first couple of council meetings since COVID. Uh, but since then, I do not see any need for continuing to extend this, so I will not be supporting this extension.
Okay, additional comments? Alderman Mulliner?
Um, I fully support this, and I hope that all the rest of the aldermen support this, and will continue to support this. This is a necessity in today's world, um, with the COVID situation that's occurring. Currently, the governor has continued his executive orders, um, and we're anticipating that until we get to phase five, those executive orders will probably continue. Um, please, everybody understand that if, for some reason, we decided not to extend this privilege to the mayor to be able to do the things that he needs to do, uh, any executive order that he has previously signed would go away instantaneously. So, if it was voted down this evening, it'd go away that night. Um, tomorrow morning, everything would go back to the way that it was in the past, so all of the businesses that we've tried to assist, uh, would be in a situation where they would have to close down all of their outdoor seating, with the exception of the way that we used to do it. Um, a number of other things, um, that would be changed. The, we currently allow the walk-up and, or the purchase of, uh, liquor at some of the bars, et cetera, uh, walk-up packaged goods, that would have to go away, and a whole series of other events that, uh, the mayor has put into place. I think he has been very respectful in the way that he's handled, uh, his executive power. He has kept, tried his best to contact as many aldermen as possible prior to, uh, executing any, uh, additional executive powers or any executive powers that he has. So, I would ask that we continue to, uh, support the mayor, uh, give him this authority as it's necessary in today's world. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Palomsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in response to, uh, a question that came up this week, I just wanted to point out that, um, though you, though this authority allows you, the mayor, to make some decisions, um, without going through this full process, the council has been still proceeding through those processes whenever possible, and, um, if ever there's been a decision made without all of those steps, the order has been made available and posted, available to the public. So, I just want to point that out. Thanks.
Okay, any additional comments? Who? Alderman Bram? Alderman Bram? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, and I just want to, um, reiterate what Alderman Palomsky just stated, um, because it is different than what Alderman Mulliner's statement said, is that everything would revert back to prior to the executive order. Some of, not all, we as a council have subsequently passed as a ci- city council due to the norm, or utilizing the normal process. We have that ability to do that for every executive order if we so choose. So, it is not an accurate statement in my perspective to say that everything would revert back. This executive order was needed in phase two, early on in COVID. We are in phase four. We have the ability to pass things the same night if we so chose. We have not utilized that only, I think, tonight, um, only in exception cases. So, we have the ability to move quickly to pass, um, any policy needed without continuing an executive order.
Any additional conversation? I have to look two places. Alderman Mulliner?
Um, yes, there has been some action taken after executive orders have been placed and done, um, but there still are a number of executive orders that are outstanding that have to still be addressed by the council if we wanted to, uh, continue to allow those. Uh, the concern that I have is that the, if the mayor does not have this authority, if the governor were to change some rule tomorrow, uh, we would not have the ability to react fast enough without applying, without giving the mayor the authority to do what he needs to, and to continue doing it in the fashion that he has been doing it. So, I believe that we still have to continue to allow him to have that authority. Uh, I've seen no abuse of it. I've seen it handled in a very professional way, and I still continue to support it wholeheartedly, and I think that it's something that I, I hope that we continue to get assistance and help from the council on. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Court Tamer to call the vote.
Bram?
No.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Doiter?
Alderman Doiter?
Alderman Doiter got to speak up. We're having trouble hearing you.
I think we lost our audio, Mayor.
Uh, okay, so we won't record it right now. She'll vote with a majority depending on how it votes. Oh, Alderman Doiter, you have the ability to electronically raise your hand in, uh, our Zoom or whatever. Okay, so she has raised her hand, giving an indication of her, uh...
Support.
Verimus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item seven point eight is approved. Onto, uh, reports and recommendations. Eight point one's the mayor, that's me. Couple of things. First of all, there is a shredding and recycling event, uh, at Elmhurst College on the twenty-fifth of this month.
Elmhurst what?
Oh, see? At Elmhurst University, there is a recycling event for both shredding and recycling. Um, there's a list of what they will take. For the most part, everything's free, with the exception of, I think, TVs and maybe some, uh, computer monitors, there's a fee for that. But, uh, it's posted on our city website. I would encourage everybody to take advantage of that predominantly free event. Uh, second, it has been mentioned, we are in phase four, um, and, uh, the governor and the folks who govern the state, uh, continuing, continue to reevaluate, um, how they are applying certain safety measures to all of us. Um, so, I would continue to stay vigilant. Um, please, uh, stay safe, uh, if and when possible, and if you can, uh, please try to support local businesses as they try to navigate through these difficult times. Uh, next, I want to certainly congratulate the two aldermen, the two new aldermen that we have sworn in today. Um, uh, I appreciate, uh, the fact that they're willing to, uh, throw their hat in the ring. I do also want to thank everybody else who did apply. Um, as I mentioned, uh, to every single person that I interviewed, um, there's only going to be two people chosen, and the rest of the people will be somewhat disappointed. But, uh, please, take the opportunity to, uh, stay engaged, stay involved. We have eighteen boards and commissions in Elmhurst, and, uh, there's always a lot of, uh, openings and rotations going on there. So, you can either contact myself or any one of your aldermen. Uh, they're familiar with the boards and commissions. They'd be happy to tell you what they do and possibly how you can get involved. Um, that's it for me. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there is, actually, there's two events going on that have to do with recycling.
I conflated them.
Um, yeah, they're, they're in two separate locations because...
Oh, that's, I didn't realize.
Yeah, so there, there are actually two separate, um, events. One, they're both in partnership with DuPage County, and, uh, one of them is in partnership with Representative Diemazaki, uh, and that's the one that's going to be at Elmhurst University on this Saturday, twenty-fifth, from ten to twelve, and they will take everything, and that is free. And then, we have our quarterly electronic recycling event this Saturday as well, and they will take almost everything for free. There is a cost for TVs, and that is from eight to twelve at the Public Works Garage on Riverside Drive. And I have, uh, two other things, uh, just a reminder to people that, uh, if you did buy your vehicle sticker, please affix it to your vehicle, and if you didn't buy your vehicle sticker, please do so, uh, to avoid, uh, citation as we begin enforcement of that. And then, the last item is regarding the, uh, bicycle and pedestrian plan. In May, the city of Elmhurst released draft recommendations for the bicycle and pedestrian plan, which details ways to improve streets and intersections for walking and biking. Since then, the project team has been gathering valuable input from residents on recommendations. There is still a chance to review the draft recommendations and provide public comments by going to bikewalkelmhurst.com. Again, that's bikewalkelmhurst.com, or you can get there from the city website, elmhurst.org. The deadline to provide comments on the draft recommendations is July thirty-first of twenty twenty, coming up, uh, by the end of this month. Later this year, the draft plan will be presented to the community and city council for final review and comment. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports from the dials? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thanks to the city council for approving and supporting item seven point eight on tonight's consent agenda. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about that. Um, that was in relationship to the twenty nineteen comprehensive annual financial report and both a single audit and the full audit of our city's finances. First off, I'd like to thank staff, Tom, Lori Ryan, as well as their full team on the finance team here, the city, our committee, for the time it took to review that information. Also, the audit team for the time it took to go through all of that. Um, it's, uh, my pleasure to report that we did get another year of a clean audit, uh, which is kind of the best you can get in an audit scenario. It means that there were no, um, negative things found during the audit process. So, uh, that's great for us. Um, the comprehensive annual financial report is something that the city is required by law to issue every year. Um, it's available, um, out on our website, as well as the audit report. And I would encourage all residents and elected officials to read the management summaries. Um, if you don't read all of it, read the management summaries of both of these documents, as they do show, illustrate what a strong financial foundation we have and what strong management of our city's finances we have here. Um, you can, again, find these documents on elmhurst.org, and you can search for the twenty nineteen audit to find all of those documents. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Any other business? Uh, no other business. Onto, uh, agenda item ten point one. This is an ordinance. I would ask, uh, Court Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance rejecting all bids for the Schiller Palmer Parking Structure Maintenance Repairs Project and awarding the project to JLJ Contracting, Inc. See item seven point eleven.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Where's Alderman Kennedy?
Alderman Kennedy has his hand up here.
Okay. So, we're going to take that as a motion to approve as read. Do I have a second? Alderman Doiter has her hand up as well. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Where is Alderman Kennedy? Oh, there he is. Alderman Kennedy, your report. I'm sorry, uh, you have the floor. It's an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we were, we approved this, uh, report as part of the consent agenda. Uh, it is on, uh, this section of the agenda because we are looking to suspend the rules. Uh, reason being is because of COVID nineteen, we have an opportunity to get the work done very quickly on the parking garage. So, uh, by, by doing this, uh, suspension of the rules, we can get onto that work very quickly. Thank you.
Any other comments? Nobody has their hand up. I'll ask for a call for the vote.
Alderman Bram?
Aye.
Sorry.
Palomsky? Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Thank you. Verimus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item ten point one is approved. Onto resolutions. Eleven point one, I would ask, uh, Court Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the renewal of the Luci- Lucity computerized management maintenance system software licenses for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item seven point one three.
Go ahead. I think you read the, the resolution for eleven point two.
Yeah, we're correcting that right now.
I'm seeing it, yes. Okay, so, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of change order number two for the WRF Electrical Distribution Building Project as part of bundle number two, WRF Improvements Project. See item seven point twelve.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Doiter. Discussion, Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, because this is part of an IEPA loan, we're required to go back through and, uh, memorialize this as a report. So, normally, if this was not part of, uh, IEPA, we would not be required to do this and therefore back through. So, um, we've also asked to suspend the rules because of our desire to, uh, continue with making sure that we stay on track for the project timeline on this, uh, portion of the project. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Court Tamer to call the vote.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Doiter?
Alderman Doiter?
Alderman Doiter got to speak up. We're having trouble hearing you.
I think we lost our audio, Mayor.
Uh, okay, so we won't record it right now. She'll vote with a majority depending on how it votes. Oh, Alderman Doiter, you have the ability to electronically raise your hand in, uh, our Zoom or whatever. Okay, so she has raised her hand, giving an indication of her, uh...
Support.
Verimus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Onto agenda item eleven point two. This is also a resolution. I'm going to ask Court Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the renewal of the Lucity computerized management maintenance system software licenses for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item seven point one three.
Okay, to put this resolution before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Doiter. Discussion, Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, because this is part of an IEPA loan, we're required to go back through and, uh, memorialize this as a report. So, normally, if this was not part of, uh, IEPA, we would not be required to do this and therefore back through. So, um, we've also asked to suspend the rules because of our desire to, uh, continue with making sure that we stay on track for the project timeline on this, uh, portion of the project. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Court Tamer to call the vote.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Doiter? Verimus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Onto agenda item eleven point two.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nay.
14 ayes, zero nay, motion carries. Onto agenda item 11.2, this is also a resolution. I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the renewal of the Lucity Computerized Management Maintenance System software licenses for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 7.13.
Okay, to put this resolution before counsel, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here again, suspending the rules to do things in an efficient manner. In this case, the Lucity fees to get the most favorable pricing, we need to do that by August 1st. So if we were to wait for the next council meeting, we would miss that opportunity to get the best pricing. So thus the reason for the suspension of the rules. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Chaludo? Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Hanquist? Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner? Deuter? Verimus?
Aye.
Leader? Dunn?
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
14 ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 11.2 is approved. And then agenda 12, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Verimus, second by Alderman Cahill. Fantastic. I think we'll do it by voice vote since we have people on the line.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Chaludo?
Aye.
Park? Alderman Park?
Aye.
There we go.
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Aye.
Mulliner? Leader? Does your hand up? Verimus?
Aye.
Leader? Dunn?
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
14 ayes, zero nays, motion is approved. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.